The City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona will be held November 17th, 2020, at 6:00 PM at the Cottonwood Recreation Center. Could please have the clerk take the roll?
Councilmember Hulse?
Here.
Councilmember Henry?
Here.
Councilmember Kurot?
Here.
Councilmember Narin?
Here.
Councilmember Wildon?
Here.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Mayor Olinsky?
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. And I just want to give a warm welcome to Helene Karat, Councilmember Karat. You've been on the other side for well over a year now, and you're finally in your seat. So, welcome. We're glad to have you. And next is our brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. So, councilmembers, do we have anything to report?
I don't know, Mayor, if you or another council member was going to report on the Veterans Day service at our Veteran Memorial Park. I just wanted to say it was a beautiful service and nice weather and just lovely commemoration of Veterans Day that was put on, so.
Yeah, it was beautiful. Our city manager was there as well, and the highlight for me was Mr. Fred Piper, reading the poem that he wrote, a 95-year-old veteran. I think he is now the oldest veteran in the community. It was really good to see him out and about, and still strong as an ox and a little peppery at times.
He's earned it.
He has earned it, indeed, yeah. Any other councilmembers? Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmember Henry, I couldn't agree more. It was a, you know, I hear a small town, Cottonwood, and I might go to a place like that where people have donated their money and their resources and their times and put together just a gem of a place. If you haven't been to our Veterans Park, you need to stop by. It is worth it. There are a lot of names on the monuments, and it just is, it's a phenomenal place to show respect and think about all the people who have served keeping us the American free. It's just, it's pretty neat. Couple announcements, especially through Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec is expanding their offerings online. Members and guests are now able to purchase or renew their memberships online, as well as reserve, register, and sign up for events and activities. We are currently offering online registration for lap swimming and reserved family recreational swim. So, what that little announcement says is our indoor pool is open, and it is open for families. So, we found a way that families, family units can reserve the pool area and have some playtime with the kids in hour increments. We're very excited about that. I know that Jack and Josh worked very hard to make that happen. Had a few morning members approach me and ask very politely and forcefully to please open the indoor pool, and so I'm very appreciative of Jack and Josh to make that happen, very excited about that. Toys for Tots has begun unloading their gifts into the youth center building for this year's program. They're expecting over 8,000 toys to be stored in the building until late December. The Parks and Rec Recreation Department has been working with Cottonwood Oak Creek School District on this year's Angel Tree Program. Tags will be ready and available on November 30th. Last year, we were able to place over 100 angel tags and are hoping to match those numbers again this year. The Cottonwood Library Advisory Board will be holding their regular monthly meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, at the Riverfront Water Reclamation Facility, beginning at 5:00 PM. That's tomorrow night. One of my favorite board meetings, if you've never been to a library board meeting, a group of people that care a lot about our community and the services we offer, a great group of volunteers. The Historic Preservation Commission will be holding a special meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, at the Cottonwood Recreation Center, beginning at 6:00 PM. So, again, tomorrow night for HPC. And then I wanted to let council know, I don't know that I let people know, but I plan to take Wednesday off of next week, and will maybe out of state. So, I wanted to make sure you guys knew that for next weekend.
All right, very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have presentations, and we have two presentations this evening. We're going to start off with a presentation regarding the Cottonwood-Sedona Link Systems COVID-19 Response and Its New Name Graphics and Branding Strategy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Rudy Rodriguez. I'm the deputy city manager for the City of Cottonwood. Some of you may know that Cottonwood has been providing, the CATs, Cottonwood Area Transit has been providing services since about 1980s, but in 2009, we started providing services to Sedona via the Link System. Was originally a NAPDA idea and became the City of Cottonwood's idea when we took the service back over. Since then, of course, in recent times, we've had some issues with the pandemic, and we've had to make some alterations. We cut out the late-night service and then kind of limited the times that we were out there. We also had physical distancing challenges. We're real happy to report that we're almost back to full capacity. We still have the issues of physical distancing on our buses, and we maintain those restrictions, but we have all of our routes back the way they were before, except for one thing that has changed is our weekend service has now shifted to Mondays and Tuesdays. Yes, shifted to Mondays and Wednesdays. We have full services on Saturdays and Sundays for Sedona, obviously. Those are their busiest days, and we want to make sure they were taken care of. There've also been some other changes that I will have Selena Barlow explain. She has a presentation that's very good. I will go ahead and introduce Selena, because she's the one who's been putting a lot of this stuff together. Her and Bruce have been working diligently to try to get this marketing program for Sedona put together. Selena Barlow is owner of Transit Marketing LLC for more than 25 years, and has over 25 years of experience in marketing public transportation services throughout the United States. Her areas of expertise include marketing plan development, marketing research, community outreach, and the creation of marketing tools and campaigns. Since the founding of Transit Marketing in 1988, Ms. Barlow has worked with more than 125 transit systems. Her work focuses on rural and small urban systems similar to the one in Cottonwood and Sedona. She is highly familiar with the Verde Valley region and its services through her prior work with ADOT, NAPDA, and the City of Cottonwood, along with the, and has also been instrumental in working with the Sedona Transit Implementation Plan. Prior to the establishment of Transit Market, Transit Markings, which is her company, she was chief of marketing for the Metro Day Transit area and agency in Miami, Florida, where she had a comprehensive budget, I mean, excuse me, comprehensive bus and transit marketing division, and was the director of marketing for Sun Transit in Tucson, Arizona. Ms. Barlow holds a Master in Business Administration with a focus in marketing from the University of Arizona and a Bachelor of Science in Advertising from the School of Journalism at the University of Florida. Please welcome Ms. Barlow on the transit presentation.
Thank you. Evening.
More than you ever wanted to know about me. Good evening. I'm sorry for running in at the last minute. I was at the other location. Rudy's talked a little bit, and I assume that all of you can see the slides on your laptops.
Yes.
Rudy talked a little bit about the COVID response, so I won't go back over that. But I do want to start by just reminding you that Cottonwood provides three types of transit services. You operate the CAT service, which are the local fixed routes. You operate CAT paratransit, which is for people with ADA eligibility, people with disabilities, and you operate the Verde Links, which is service between Cottonwood and Sedona. And my focus tonight is going to be on the Verde Links. Rudy mentioned that I've had kind of a long history of working in this area, and I was actually involved with you guys when the Verde Links launched back in 2009. And so, I have a, it has a special place in my heart, so I'm happy to still be involved with it now. The service, whoops, this is touchy. The service begins in Cottonwood at the library, goes through West Sedona, down to the Poco Diablo Resort, and into Uptown. Now, right now, this is the only transit service operated in the City of Sedona. It is operated by Cottonwood. It began in 2009, as Rudy said, started out with eight trips a day on weekdays, gradually expanded over the next 10 years until it was up to 12 trips a day and a little more weekend service. And then in 2019, the late-night service was added. With additional funding from the City of Sedona, service was expanded till 10:30 at night, and it ran seven days a week, but only late nights on five days. Then the pandemic came along. It was at the point where service was expanded that we started talking about this marketing plan and the need to more aggressively market the service to fill that additional capacity. But the pandemic came along. Service was cut back to weekend levels, but we kept thinking about it, knowing that when the service was reintroduced, it was going to be more important than ever that we market it. So, we've been kind of cogitating on it over time. To give you a little bit of context, the Verde Links is owned and operated by Cottonwood, but is funded in partnership with Sedona, so they provide about 75% of the match funding. It is the only transit service operated in Sedona, but they did do their Transit Implementation Plan in 2019, and they're planning on the development of a robust transit service there. And so, Verde Links is really something to be built on at this point, and so that there can be region-wide public transportation service. And it is with that thought in mind that the Sedona Chamber decided to commit resources to developing a campaign and implementing it for Verde Links. So, while we've been waiting and thinking about this, the service was brought back up to pre-COVID levels. And as Rudy said, in the process of doing this, we talked with employers, a lot of the major employers in Sedona. And one of the things we heard is, you know, the really busy days in Sedona, the time when most people are working and the most people are there, is Wednesday through Sunday, obviously, through the weekends. On Monday and Tuesday, a lot of the restaurants are closed, and so it didn't seem to make sense to operate late-night service Monday through Friday and then not have it on Saturday and Sunday, but we couldn't expand it to seven days a week because of funding. So, what they opted for was to expand the service so that it now operates from like 6:30 AM to 10:30 PM, Wednesday through Sunday, and then shorter hours on Monday and Tuesday. With that reimplementation, we, I worked directly with Bruce to develop some promotional materials, some posters, some social media posts, news releases, and so on. And both the Sedona Chamber and the City of Cottonwood staff were really instrumental in getting those out to employers and informing people. And as a result, you know, ridership is gradually creeping back up, but it is nowhere near pre-pandemic levels at this point, at least I don't think so, Bruce. Bruce is agreeing with me. So, that brings us to now, and that brings us to what we want to do moving forward. And I've worked with the Sedona Chamber, and Michelle is here from the Sedona Chamber, to develop a plan that they plan to implement at the beginning of 2021, or as soon as things are somewhat beginning to get back to normal, that would reintroduce the Verde Links in a fresh way to the community, say, not only are we coming back, but we're coming back better and stronger, would build awareness for the service and how to use it among the key potential rider group, which are people that are commuting between the two communities, would generate trial ridership, and would really enlist the support of the tourism sector in promoting the service, because that is really a critical component. And then finally, would begin to build more of a transit culture in Sedona, because long-term, that's their goal, is to introduce a robust transit system and to use transit to help alleviate some of the terrible congestion that they get there. So, with those objectives in mind, we began to think about the target markets. And again, the primary target market right now are folks that are commuting between Cottonwood and Sedona. It makes up 75, 80% of the ridership of Links. And with that in mind, the employers become really important gatekeepers, because they're our most efficient way to reach people that are making that commute, that are working at those places in Sedona that you can get to on the Verde Links. Secondary target audiences, our local residents that are traveling for non-work purposes, and visitors, because now that we're providing late-night service, you know, visitors in Sedona can actually take advantage of the Links to go out to dinner or to do other kinds of things that they might want to do. But that's the secondary audience. Whoops, that was quick. So, the strategies that we've developed in the plan, there's a lot of them, but they really fall into three focal points. And the first focal point is passenger information, because without good information, transit is confusing. People don't use it. And so, we want to make commuting between Cottonwood-Sedona on transit as easy as driving your car. And to do that, we've got several things in the plan. The first is a dedicated website for Verde Links, a really user-friendly website that'll help educate employees that work in Sedona about what the service has to offer. The second part is to promote the digital tools that Bruce has already put into place. People can use their smartphones to plan a trip in Google Maps. They can use the RouteChout app to get real-time information about exactly when the bus is going to be at a given bus stop. We want people to know that, to know they have those tools available. We're going to develop an enhanced bilingual printed passenger guide that'll be widely distributed, both through the employers and other channels, and then information displays for at the bus stops. And all of those will help educate people about how to use the service and make it easy. The second set of strategies, whoops, this thing is touchy, relate to awareness building through branding. Branding is basically how we identify a service or anything associated with it. And in a transit system, our primary branding tools are our buses, our vehicles, and our bus stop signs. And they are seen by more people every day than see anything else we do. And so, they're really critical marketing tools. And right now, the vehicles kind of don't really communicate the fact that the services is tying Cottonwood and Sedona together, that branding's kind of gotten subdued into the overall branding. And so, we, because this campaign has been delayed till January, it is going to coincide with the introduction of new buses in the Verde Links fleet. And there's an opportunity to refresh the branding, to introduce a new look that'll really support this campaign, so we can visually communicate that idea, that we're coming back, not only back, but better, something new. So, I'm going to come back to that thought in a while, because I don't want to get bogged down on graphics right now, but at the end, I have some preliminary things to show you. Whoops. Now, the next kind of big set of strategies relate to awareness building by working through the employers. And this is probably the single biggest thing that the Chamber is going to be bringing to this project. Our plan is to develop a toolkit for the employers to use in promoting the Verde Links to their employees. And that toolkit would include a video presentation for use at their staff meetings. It would include displays for their break rooms, and it would include collateral materials, both for them to include in their orientation kits and when they're out hiring people, but also for promoting the service to their existing employees. And in talking with them in development of the plan, I think they really are ready to be helpful. They're ready to promote the service if they're given the tools to do it with, and they're ready to put policies in place that'll make using transit viable, such as Flex Time and things like that. And then these tools would also be available to the employment agencies, the social service agencies that help connect people with jobs, because they're going to be another important marketing tool. And so, the Chamber is not only going to develop this campaign, but then also do the outreach and the effort that's required to put it into place. The plan includes some other things, like awareness building through direct mail here in the Cottonwood area to households, and then some conventional and social media, newspaper ads, Facebook page for Verde Links, and so on. But the three really critical components are the passenger information, the branding, and the employer outreach. So, if you have any questions about the strategies, I'm happy to answer those now before I move on to looking at branding alternatives.
Any questions from council?
Okay. Well, first step in developing the campaign is to figure out what we're going to call the service and what the vehicles are going to look like, and we need to decide that fairly quickly. So, this is what the existing vehicle looks like. I showed you that a minute ago. And we've had a good bit of conversation about this, and what it came down to is that we'd like to change the name of the service, and we'd like to change it from Verde Links, which is what NAPDA branded it as, to Verde Shuttle. And the reason that we selected this name, there's really three reasons. One, Verde we definitely want to keep. This is the Verde Valley. This service connects the Verde Valley. That's critical. Shuttle is a word that immediately communicates what it is. You don't have to think about it. A shuttle, you know what a shuttle is? It gets you from point A to point B. Sedona is still working on the branding for their system, but it's very likely that it's going to be called the Sedona Shuttle. And branding this as the Verde Shuttle would begin to create an integration between the two services, between the two communities, and that this is a leg of that network that was being created. We also think that whenever that name is used, it should also have Cottonwood to Sedona right underneath it. We want to make it loud and clear that that's what this service does. And so, with that in mind, Bruce actually had an idea, or someone on his staff, for kind of a very rough look for what the buses might look like, how it would visually communicate the Cottonwood to Sedona link. And so, we refined that look. We've made four variations of it, and that's what I'm going to show you. This is, ooh, that is really ugly colors. That is not the colors as they look. So, this is, the idea is that we're going from the green of Verde Valley to the red of Sedona. But in real life, when they're not on this monitor, these colors are a darker green and a nice rusty red, like the rocks in Sedona look. Verde Shuttle, very bold on the side, and the Cottonwood to Sedona tagline, really bold there. Also, the weather address and the phone number for the bus would be right there in the header. There would be potential, over time, to maybe have a bus back ad that communicated a little bit more about how many days a week the service ran, how often it ran, and things like that. So, that's one idea. And then we asked the graphic artist to just kind of riff on that idea and look at some alternatives. This takes it a little more, a little less representational, a little more avant-garde. It carries the green further up on the bus, you know, sort of uses the V in a different way, changes the Cottonwood to Sedona tag. Whoops. Just another variation with a very large V and making the mountains a little more stylized. And then finally, just another variation on that with the Verde Shuttle getting bigger. So, really, just four variations of the same concept. Like I said, I hope the colors look different on your monitor, because they really don't look like that. They're really very lovely, the dark green moving into the rusty red. So, tonight, I ask you, would you like to have input on this decision? Would you like to choose one of these four? Would you like to suggest that we do number four, but we use the representational hills from number one? Or would you like to leave it to the marketing folks to pick among them?
Council, do you have any druthers on this? Councilmember Wildon, you look like you have something to say.
Well, I think obviously the marketing people, you know, would be better suited for it, although I do have my opinion.
Of course you do, okay.
And I'll just text that to you, because I have something else I want to talk to Michelle about as well, so I'll just, I'll email Michelle.
Okay. I'd rather leave it to the marketing folks personally. My only question, though, is on the first shuttle, we have a verdiconnect.org, and on the rest of them, we have the verdishuttle.org. Personally, I'd rather not brand our website along with Verde Connect, if at all possible, just for that program.
That was just an error, actually. The website that would be developed for the Verde Shuttle would be verdishuttle.org, just for the Verde Shuttle, and then that could be, you know, direct to that from the City of Cottonwood website.
Good catch, I didn't see that.
Thank you. That was, that was the artist going back and forth on different potential names when we were still thinking about it.
Any other thoughts to share?
I do. How was that?
Yeah, I'm of the mind, too, to let the experts decide on the design.
Okay. Well, if you don't have any other questions, then I'll let you get on with your business for the evening. Thank you.
Well, thanks, Ms. Barlow, for your presentation, and I just, and Ms. Conway, too, for being here. Really appreciate it. This partnership with Cottonwood-Sedona has really been a game changer from 2009. It's just a great way to get people to Sedona to work, and of course, back home to Cottonwood. We know there's always been a connection there, but it's really nice to have public transportation kind of fill that void. And I take it, too, when I need to go to Sedona to recreate or whatever, it's really a great, great way to get out there and not have to worry about parking and all the other hassle, so, excellent.
People from Sedona can come over here to come to all the great restaurants you have downtown now, so.
Indeed, indeed.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next presentation this evening is a presentation and review of the new monthly city finance report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kirsten Linden, Financial Services Director. I don't really have a presentation presentation. The actual printout of the financial report that was in the packet and is on the website is the presentation. Mainly, we just wanted to bring it in front of you to see and get your feedback on the report. It was one of our strategic goals from the last strategic plan, and I've been working on it, and I finally got Ron to agree to let me bring it forward to you, so you get June of 2020, because that was the most recent info that I had populated. And the plan is basically to present this, this report monthly at one of the council meetings, either on consent or in presentations, or however you want to see it. And we just wanted to make sure that you understood, to see if you had any questions, to see if there was anything that we left off that you wanted to see, that we could add a small area to, and just to basically give you an opportunity to make comment.
I just said, when I, when I first looked this over with Ron and Mary Ann when we were going over the agenda, I was very pleased to see that this is coming to fruition. I know it's something that we've kind of talked about for a long time. It's nice to have a very digestible format that gives us, you know, that snapshot and keeps us up to date.
Right. It was very, I like your word, digestible, very easy to understand, and a lot of information packaged in a few pages, so I think this is really good format and easy for me to skim through and see where.
Counsel?
I have lost my connection, so I can't see my packet on my laptop.
Oh, okay.
So, it's a little hard for me to, if I could, that'd be great. Sorry, Kirsten.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't see anything in here that I'd like changed or added or deleted. I think it's...
No, the report will always be about two months behind, only because of when we receive our revenue numbers. So, you'll be getting a little, there's a small lag, just because of how our revenue numbers come in for our sales tax.
It is a lot of information in a small space, compact and everything, so it does look good to me, too. Thank you.
You understand all that?
I didn't say understand it.
Yeah, I talked to Ron a little bit about it. It's a lot of information, a lot of kind of counties. It's like me coming and speaking to you about a real estate deal, about the Binzer and the Spuds and the wastewater treatment and all that, but I don't know, maybe more layman's terms, something we can put out to our constituency. And it's not, this is not a reflection on you, this is more reflection on this side. Just something a little, less information.
Okay.
It's, it's nice to have a very digestible format that gives us, you know, that snapshot and keeps us up to date.
Right. It was very, I like your word, digestible, very easy to understand, and a lot of information packaged in a few pages, so I think this is really good format and easy for me to skim through and see where I'm at.
Counsel?
I have lost my connection, so I can't see my packet on my laptop.
Oh, okay.
So it's a little hard for me to, if I could, that'd be great. Sorry, Kirsten.
That's okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I can't see anything in here that I'd, I'd like changed or added or deleted. I think it's...
No, the report will always be about two months behind, only because of when we receive our revenue numbers. So you'll be getting a little, there's a small lag just because of how our revenue numbers come in for our sales tax.
It is a lot of information in a small space, compact and everything, so it does look good to me, too. Thank you.
You understand all that?
Didn't say understand it.
Yeah, I talked to Ron a little bit about it. I mean, it's a lot of information, a lot of kind of counties. It's like me coming and speaking to you about a real estate deal about the Binzer and the Spuds and the wastewater treatment and all that. But I don't know, maybe more layman's terms, something we can put out to our constituency. And it's not, this is not a reflection on you. This is more reflection on this side. Just something a little, less information.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, and I'll go with the majority there, that maybe it doesn't have to be so much work and so much information, just the highlights. And mostly, too, to highlight where we're going, the positives. This is, this is the positive where we're going. I don't know what that should look like.
Well, I think you bring up a good point, though, and I, you know, if there was something that could be, you know, on our transparency page on the website so that the public, you know, I think this is good for us because, you know, we're the ultimate stewards of the budget, but maybe something that could be, like you said, for the, for the layman to view. Maybe not a monthly thing, maybe it could just be a quarterly thing.
I don't even know that you need to take, maybe just pluck out a part of it as opposed to having to recreate.
Well, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, if I can add, this is going to be public record because we're going to put it in the packet every month. We can easily just post this to one of our transparency webpages. That's not a problem. And then as, you know, citizens can always comment on the webpage. There's a webmaster, and with those come in, and we can make adjustments if we start to get questions or see comments on that, you know. And if you want, we can even do Facebook posts, and we can put it out there so people can contact our offices directly, especially early on in the beginning. And specifically Vice Mayor, I've already seen a couple of things, HERF, nobody knows what HERF is, CIP, not everybody's going to know what CIP is. So we'll, we'll take a look at some of those words and figure out how to better explain those so laypeople can understand it. But, and if you want to reach out to myself or Kirsten individually with questions or comments, additions, subtractions, just let us know. We can do it. This is, once we get the format, and Kirsten, correct me if I'm wrong, once we get the format, it's a plug and play.
Yeah.
So once we get it to the way you want, it's, it's not meant to be laborious each month?
It's not. I mean, it's just, the graphs are all set up. You just put the numbers in and then put them into the, on the page. So it's not super labor intensive. It just, just the creation of it and getting a format set was really what took the longest.
Looks good to me.
Very good.
Well, thank you. And again, if you have any suggestions or anything you really want to see or don't want to see, just you can email myself or Ron, and we'll get it adjusted and get it out there.
Okay. That's great. Thanks. Thanks for your work on this. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll move on to the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 20th, 2020, November 3rd, 2020, and the special meeting of November 4th, 2020.
I move to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 20, 2020, November 3rd, 2020, and November 4th, 2020.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Henry made the motion, and Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Minutes are approved. Now we go into the consent agenda. We have six items tonight under the consent agenda. These following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda. So I'll go ahead and read each item out loud, and if there's an item that someone would like to pool, please indicate so. Item one is consideration of staff recommendation for approval of a proposed scope and cost proposal from Kimley Horn to prepare cost estimates, design, and oversee the replacement of the automated weather reporting equipment at the Cottonwood Airport, along with a reimbursable grant agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation to fund 90% of the anticipated total costs of the project. Item two is agreement with U.S. Geological Survey for joint funding for the costs of hydrologic data collection in the middle Verdi River watershed for federal fiscal years 2020 to 2021, 2021 to 22, and 2022 to 23. Item three is request for waiver of procurement policy and approval for sole-source, non-competitive purchase of a one-time, excuse me, of a one-ton dump truck for the Utilities Department for an amount not to exceed $56,000. Item four, resolution number 303074, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Phoenix Police Department for grant funding to support the Cottonwood Police Department's efforts against internet crimes against children. Item five is Cottonwood Air Park consent to collateral assignment of leasehold interests in Lot 113, 128 to 130, and 445 South Air Park Road. And last, item six, amended lease and animal shelter service agreement with the Verdi Valley Humane Society. Is there an item that a council member or member of the public would like to have pooled?
Yes, please. Items three and six.
Items three and six. Okay, we'll go ahead and pool those items, and I would motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay. Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded it, and all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And you said items three and six. Is that correct? Yep. Okay, so before we move on, council, or, Mary Ann Heeman is our clerk. If you could, please read resolution number 3074 by title only.
Resolution number 3074, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Phoenix Police Department for grant funding to support the Cottonwood Police Department's efforts against internet crimes against children.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll go, we're going to go ahead and pool item three. And this is a request for waiver of procurement policy and approval for the sole-source, non-competitive purchase of a one-ton dump truck for the Utilities Department for an amount not to exceed $56,000.
I'm going to try to answer the questions. I told him he didn't have to be here tonight, so he's standing by his phone. So I may, Mr. Mayor, have to ask for it to be moved to the end of the agenda if we need to, if I can't answer it. We also have our Finance Director here, too.
And I understand, thank you, just, I strongly prefer, wherever possible, that we have a competitive bid process here. Personally, I don't see documentation in the packet to justify the sole-source process. The only statement that I can see is that we're in a hurry, that's, that, quote, "Staff needs to move quickly."
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Henry, no, they've been shopping and looking for this, and we usually get trucks like this through a vendor, through a third-party person to help us find these trucks. We found a truck that meets our needs, so instead of now opening up the process and doing a bid process, so we, we did it through research, through a person to help us find this truck. We found the truck, and so now we're trying to buy the truck. So we're in a hurry so it doesn't get sold to someone else or someone else purchase it, not that we've bypassed looking around or trying to get the best price. This is the result of us using a third party to help us find a truck.
So I don't, we don't have documentation of that. The only documentation we received was a dealer quote that has no expiration date on it, and we do have the waiver, but again, the waiver is timing or expediency is critical. I don't see any documentation that we received, any other quotes, or really to support that the timing is critical here. And just what's in the packet, it's hard for me to be able to vote to approve a waiver of our procurement code in this situation.
Mr. Mayor, if we can hold this to the end of the agenda, I assume that we can do that, and I'll have Mr. Whitmer, our Utility Director, show up and be able to answer those questions, maybe or maybe not.
Well, and I apologize. I don't want to unduly delay the meeting. I just don't know, it doesn't sound as though we had any rush. It sounds, from what you're telling me, that we did research, so I don't know what the justification is to bypass the competitive bid process.
He'll be here before the end of the meeting. We won't delay the meeting, and if not, we can do whatever council desires with, with the agenda item, but he's on his way. He hasn't gone home yet.
Thank you.
Just hold, hold this item until Mr. Whitmer arrives, and then we'll bring it back. So then let's, let's go on then to item six, which is the amended lease and animal shelter service agreement with the Verdi Valley Humane Society.
And on this one as well, I had a very brief question, and it comes down, and perhaps this is better suited for our city attorney, and I apologize for the delay. I generally try to address these types of questions in advance of the meeting. I had issues downloading the attachment. It looks as though, from the materials, that we are moving away from, or the Humane Society is moving away from having a spay-neuter program here in the community. So I had a question because it's my understanding that our, the statutory duty for an impound contracted with a city is a requirement that we do have spay-neuter before an animal is released. So do we still have a program, and it just may not be, I may have misunderstood the materials, or can you explain that further, please?
They do not, and it's not mandatory. What we have done in the past is whenever they had resources available or we obtained a grant, and we have obtained grant in the past for spay-and-neuter programs, but they currently don't maintain, and they haven't had them for a number of years.
So I pulled the statute, and the statute says before we release an animal from impound, it has to be spayed to an owner, it has to be spayed or neutered. So I would like to make sure that if we're entering into this agreement with the Humane Society, we are meeting our statutory duties, as I interpret them. And again, I'm leaning, I keep looking at our city attorney because I could be in error. I just, I'm looking for some guidance.
Is the statute in Title 11?
Yes. Here. And my only concern, again, is making sure if we are moving forward with a contract with the Humane Society, that we are meeting our statutory requirements, that we are then contracting with them.
And we need to make sure. We will check the draft, and you, your approval can direct that we make sure that this, this duty is explicit.
Okay. And again, I apologize because normally I would have done this in advance of the meeting. I just had some issues with, I don't know if my internet was acting up or the download, so I do apologize for, you know, bringing this up just now, but I would appreciate if we could...
Yeah, that was certainly the intent, and we could certainly make that clear.
Mr. Mayor, if I can either ask a really question or seek clarification, the last time I adopted an animal, I was required to have them spayed or neutered. I don't believe it's a requirement that we pay for it. I don't believe the city has ever, out of the general fund, paid for spay and neutering, so it, they can maybe still mandate that that's done, but I don't know that it's part of our funding and our agreement, if that makes sense.
The, the BBHS is, does not do that kind of work. They haven't done it for a while. Like I said, in past years, we've gotten grants to go ahead and pay for it to be done. They usually contract with somebody else, but BBHS does not have someone on contract to do that, that I know of.
And, and our city manager is correct. From my reading of the statute, we are not responsible to pay for that. The Humane Society can pass that cost on to the owner. I would just like to make sure that we are addressing that duty where it says they're not required to have any kind of a program. Does that mean, then, that they're still ensuring that it, it is performed according to statute?
Then, do you want to put that in the form of a motion so that we can, as we prove this, we can make sure that language is in the, in the agreement?
Either that, or we can table it. I, it's really whatever our staff recommends.
I'd be comfortable either way with the direction to, to ensure that, that the Humane Society understands as part of its service obligations, we expect it to comply with its statutory duties.
I'll let you handle that one, Councilmember Henry, making that motion.
Absolutely. I move to approve the amended and restated lease and animal service agreement with the Verdi Valley Humane Society, subject to further review and/or confirmation by our city staff that we are compliant with our and the Humane Society's statutory duties wherever necessary.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Wildon seconded it. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Curat?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll go ahead and I'll contact BBHS first thing in the morning.
I also have a question.
Sure.
On, on the proposed contract language changes to standardize current contract, the third paragraph, last sentence, it says, "The city agrees to take responsibility for care and housing of community and feral cats." What does that mean?
Yeah, but you are, right?
You're taking care of my cats? Is that what you're telling me?
No. I'll have to read that thing again. I don't have it right in front of me. Now, what was that again, ma'am? Sorry.
Okay. "The city agrees to take responsibility for care and housing of community and feral cats."
I may have, I may have re, not worded that correctly. No, we don't, we're not responsible for all feral cats. We, that's, unfortunately, the statute, all the statutes that we have in place are referring to dogs and not necessarily cats, unfortunately. But no, we're, we're not taking care of any feral cats. They will take care of any cats, and we provide for them within the city of Cottonwood. They will not be taking a Camverdees, Clarkdale's, or the county's. Okay? So.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just add, we'll, we'll come back with both of those, so council's aware of the spay-neuter issue has been resolved and that the, the feral cat issue has been resolved.
All right. Then when Mr. Whitmer comes back, we'll circle back to item three on the consent agenda. But for now, let's move on to new business. These following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. First up is a request from Melissa Reyes Fox to keep bees at her residence located at 1748 Sawmill Road.
Mr. Mayor, Council, the municipal code of the city requires that any resident within the city seek permission from the city council to raise bees in their, in their backyard. So Ms. Reyes Fox has sent a letter requesting permission to keep up to five stands of bees in her backyard. She has a pretty large resident acreage there. It's 1.46 acres there in the Sawmill, Sawmill Gardens subdivision. She is here tonight to answer any questions the council may have regarding her request.
All right, very good. Counsel, would you like to hear from Ms. Reyes Fox?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening. Thanks for being here.
All right. So yeah, as Mary Ann mentioned, my name's Melissa Reyes Fox. I'm a new resident to Cottonwood. However, I have a long history in Arizona. I was born and raised here. I went to NAU, was married in Sedona 14 years ago. So I'm coming to Cottonwood from a bee-friendly community. I lived in Fort Collins, Colorado for a number of years. While I was there, I got a master's degree in ecology, and I kept bees for five, five or six years. So I'm, I'm simply here this evening to present this request to the council, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I could speak to maybe why I think bees are important if, okay.
My only concern would be what kind of hazards might they cause, period.
Sure. Yeah, that's definitely a valid concern. I was in touch with a few of my neighbors just to make sure that, you know, there were no bee allergies in the neighborhood. I actually have a one-signed letter from my neighbor, Ken Robertson. He, he's fine with it. Bees aren't, they're not aggressive by nature. They're not offensive. They, they may react defensively if, if threatened, you know, if you step on them or, or put your hand on them. But it's been my experience that they're actually really pretty self-sufficient pets almost. So I just was thinking, we have this space. I do, I do think that bees provide a very important service. I know in Cottonwood, you guys grow a lot of stone fruits, apricots, pomegranates. They're, they're essential to having a healthy ecology. It, it's estimated that one out of every three bites you take comes from food that are pollinated by bees. And so they, I think they're a good, a good indicator of a healthy ecology. And so if I can sort of do my part to provide suitable habitat, I'm happy to do that. I have, I have two, two young kids of my own, and they help me, they've helped me in the past with, with working the bees, and, and so I don't, I don't feel that it's, that it's a threat in any way.
Good with that. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, you kind of partially addressed that, but I mean, was there any official notification for neighboring properties made over, over this, and were there any objections?
The, the two neighbors that I spoke with, that, so the, the site that I'm proposing is on the east end of our property line, so I spoke to the adjoining neighbor, and I have a written letter of consent from him, as well as kind of the next neighbor over. We're, we're bordered by the Cottonwood ditch on one side, then my neighbor Ken on the other, and then the, the rest of the space is sort of bordered by the county. and then the rest of the space is sort of bordered by the county.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, I reached out to the Nature Conservancy and the Friends of the Verdi, and they were supportive of the bee project. As Councilmember Wildon brought up, they just concerns about people have allergies in the area, so checking with the neighbors, and then any other larger bodies of water, pools, they can attract the bees, just to make sure that the nearby neighbors had been evaluated for water and other issues. It was the only recommendation that they made.
Take a motion?
Yes, please.
I move to grant Melissa Reyes Fox permission to keep bees in the backyard of her residence located at 1748 Sawmill Road in accordance with her request and subject to compliance with all laws, regulations, codes, and ordinances applicable to this activity.
Second.
All right. We had a motion by the Vice Mayor Matthews, an eager second, two seconds. We'll give Councilmember Wildon the credit there. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurov?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Happy beekeeping. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Would you like a copy of the signed consent form?
Maybe give that to the clerk, I think would be good, just for the record.
You could send some of those bees over to my backyard.
Yeah. Free honey for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is item two, discussion and direction to staff regarding the submission of an application to the city's Historic Preservation Commission to landmark certain city-owned properties so that they may be included in the city's register of historic properties. Evening, Mr. Paget.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jim Paget, Community Development Planner. What I want to talk to you a little bit about this evening and have a discussion with is the Historic Preservation Commission and their goal to landmark additional properties within the city of Cottonwood. In 2017, we had a grant that we used to survey, update our survey of the properties in the Old Town area. In 2018, we expanded the boundaries of the commercial historic district. With those two things now behind us, the next, one of the next goals that the commission is looking at doing is to get additional properties to landmark within the city of Cottonwood. Presently, there are eight properties that are landmarked. Three of those are city-owned and five are privately owned. So you might ask, what's the advantage of landmarking? Good question. It expresses a sense of pride in the community, helps understand and preserve value of historic places, events, people, and cultures, participation in historic review process for any future exterior changes. And then specifically for Cottonwood, we have a small grant matching program where the Historic Preservation Commission administers a program where if somebody wants to do exterior improvements to their property, there's a $3,000 matching grant available for them. One of the requirements for that grant is that the property be landmarked. So our goal is to try to acquire additional properties through landmarking. For the private properties, they would then be eligible for that grant program. But tonight specifically, I want to look at and talk to you about the city-owned properties, and there are nine that are listed. We've had a discussion with the commission of some of these and how to move forward. We felt it would be in the best interest to have the council give us some direction, since these are city-owned properties, on how to move forward with landmarking. In order to landmark, one of the criteria is to obtain a certificate of compatibility. I'm sorry, certificate of appropriateness. I knew I said something wrong there. That, we look at a lot of different criteria, the age, the condition of the structure, relevance for the, for the community. And so with these city buildings that we're looking at, some of those may have been altered to the point that they may not qualify for a landmarking designation. Others of them have not been changed to the exterior where it changes the historic nature of the building. In order to obtain the certificate, it would, it could, in the event of some requests from the Historic Preservation Commission, they could ask for this certificate and it would require a public hearing with the Historic Preservation Commission. That has to be done within 60 days of an application that is submitted. In the event of somebody wanted to demolish a building, there could be a 90-day delay where commission would work with that applicant to try to come up with alternatives, somebody else to purchase the building, other grant monies that would be available, some other option than just quickly going in and losing what could otherwise be a historic, possibly landmarked building. I do have a, so what I want to do is, there are some, show you the exterior of the buildings, the nine, I say buildings, there actually, two of them are bridges and one of them is a park, so I should, guess I should say properties.
So while we're waiting for that presentation to come up, just to clarify, if a property is landmarked, but the current owner or future owner decides at some point they do want to demolish that property, there's really nothing that can prevent the owner from moving forward with that, other than the 90-day stay. Correct?
Correct. It sort of requires them to come to the commission and at least have a dialogue to see if there are alternatives to just tearing down the building. And sometimes might be successful, other times there are certain properties that we'd be happy to see them go.
Mayor, that is an excellent question. I had that same question because I don't see, at least in the effective landmark designation document, the three-page document in the packet, it doesn't say, it says you have to obtain this certificate of appropriateness from the commission, but it doesn't say that they will not withhold that certificate or it will not be reasonably withheld. It just says you must obtain it. So is there a way to make sure it's clear, or is it already clear and just not in the packet, that the commission can't actually deny the request?
The commission could actually deny the request, yes, and there is an appeal process that they would then appeal, provide some additional information. They would have to ask for a waiver in order to have the, to go ahead and proceed with either the demolition or a major renovation to the exterior of the building. That would then go back, the way the code is written now, with the additional information and the time and the research during that 60- to 90-day period, would then go back to the commission for a final determination if they would receive the certificate of appropriateness or not. So that, that does lie within the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission.
So that changes things. I appreciate that explanation.
Well, maybe I'm more confused now than I was prior. So they may not issue the certificate of appropriateness, but the owner could still essentially demo the building, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's correct.
Process and all of that. And then if the appeal is not successful, though?
If I might, this goes to the larger Historic Preservation ordinance and a property owner's, some of you will recall when we adopted this ordinance, I'm sorry, there is, there is an opt-out procedure. We did not make the ordinance, council did not make the ordinance binding on a property in perpetuity.
I recall that in, I mean, from my time as serving on the commission, that we wanted to put in a certain timeframe that would allow opportunities for, to find another purchase, purchaser for the property or to find some grant money that might kind of make them whole again, that they could, you know, follow through with the preservation of the property, but that at the end of the day, they could still, your head nod, at the end of the day, they could still.
Right.
Demolish, they would just be, you know, they'd have to wait that 90 days.
There's a process. Once you get the designation of a historic property, a landmark designation, then there are steps you have to go through prior to. Whereas if you don't have the designation, you don't need it.
That's built into the ordinance, the Historic Preservation? Okay. Got it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, I guess even from my own head, because you and I have discussed this, and I wanted to make sure that they could not stop an owner from doing what they wanted to do with their building at the end of the day. So Jim, at the end of the appeal process, at the end of the 90 days, the HPC has to make a decision to purchase the building, allow them to sell the building to another owner, or allow them to do what it is they were originally asking?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Okay. Good.
So in 2014, there were two properties that were landmarked. That was the old jail or the Verdi Justice Court and the clubhouse. Then in 2017, the Arizona Bank Building, which is currently the HR and Finance Building, were landmarked. Some of this I already sort of spoke about. So any exterior alteration would require the certificate of appropriateness. If somebody is just coming in and they're doing minor window repair, minor paint, minor trim work, that does not require a certificate. There's a, you know, staff approval that we can give for those types of approvals. So we don't have that authority to require somebody to conform. And the HPC would work with the property owner to come up with other alternatives. And that's where that small grant, although it is a small grant, may assist some property owners. So the landmarked city properties, as I said, are the clubhouse, the Verdi Justice Court, and the Bank of Arizona. These are the nine properties that are currently not landmarked that we'd like some direction and discussion with you tonight on moving forward with these properties or not. The picture of the clubhouse, the upper Verdi Justice Court, and the Bank of Arizona. So those first three are the ones that are currently landmarked. 817 North Main is the small little building closest to the clubhouse on that same side of the street. It's sort of a nondescript building. In the discussion with the commission, both this building and 821 North Main have had significant alterations and modifications done to them over the years from the original construction. Those two buildings most likely would not receive a landmark designation because of the changes that have been made to them. Others such as City Hall have maintained a lot of their integrity, so that would be something that may qualify more for the certificate of appropriateness and eligible for landmarking. And yes, whether the city owned it or it was in the future private property, that landmark designation would apply. City Clerk Office, 824 North Main, and the council chambers, 826 North Main, those have both retained significant historical value. The two bridges, the Del Monte Wash Bridge on the south side and Cottonwood Bridge up on the north side, those two are eligible for landmarking, as well as would the Lions Park. So it's these last nine, oh, I'm sorry, the Boys and Girls Club, that we'd like to hear from you and just see what your perspective is, and I'll take this back to the commission and we'll move forward with a list of properties, the entire list, part of a list, none of the list, and move forward from there.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir. I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll kick things off here. One, I really support the landmarking program. I think it's a good program, particularly for homeowners. And we've had a number of properties that have been landmarked that are privately owned and they can apply for the grant funding, and I think that's, that's a good thing. The home tour is the, the way that that program generates money, the proceeds from the home tour go into the landmarking program so that people can, you know, repaint their home or put a refounder or anything that kind of helps preserve the history of the home. But I also think, you know, landmarking the city properties has benefit too. I think it shows the city's supportive of its history and preservation. I think that's a good thing. And I would support most properties on this list with the exception of 817 North Main, which is the old substation, 821 North Main, which is the Business Assistance Center, the old Business Assistance Center, and 215 East Pima, which is the Boys, the old Boys and Girls Club. Reason why I'm not fond on landmarking those is because I think in the, in the greater plan that, you know, former councils have discussed, former administrations and current council members as well, those properties may at some point be raised to create a better access to the activity park behind there and just create, create a more open, open park setting. And I don't find a lot of value personally in those buildings. I think they haven't modified significantly. And I know that landmarking them wouldn't prohibit them from being demolished in the future, but I think it just may send a mixed message that, that's, again, this is my own personal opinion, so. Otherwise, I think landmarking the bridges is very important. Of course, Lions Park, I think, I think these are good candidates for landmarking.
My only question would be what, with the city having to spend not a lot of money, but some money, what would that do to our budget? Are we okay with that?
There's not a cost of landmark. It just goes through the.
Well, I thought it was a matching.
If somebody that has a landmarked property wants to apply, the HPC has a small grant program, so it's up to $3,000. Correct? That the HPC has raised doing various functions.
But it would be the city's money if the city chose to do that, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Wildon, yes, if we decided to make improvements and apply for that grant.
Okay.
But we would, probably would not be doing that. We would budget monies out of the budget process, general fund, to pay for whatever repairs and really save the HPC grant to our community and to people who are trying to improve their personal landmarked properties, which is what the HPC's goal is. We would, we would budget the whole thing.
Okay.
And go ahead, Vice Mayor, if you were about to speak.
Okay. So as being a former member of the Historic Preservation Commission too, I strongly support the landmarking. And just to dovetail on what the mayor was saying, in light of kind of our general plan for the future, maybe sooner, maybe later, on having a consolidated city hall and moving out of those buildings and selling those buildings in the future, I was a little reticent to see any building that we might sell in the future be landmarked. Just being a real estate broker and knowing how that might affect value or perception as far as purchasing something like that and the problems that may ensue, whether they're real or not, it's, you know, if it's perception, it's reality. I also, I also wanted to call, I called the most, what I consider the most experienced and prominent real estate, commercial real estate broker in town and asked his opinion on that. And he said absolutely not. Any property that you're going to want to sell, he would recommend not landmarking it. And I think I would tend to agree with that. So if that's our plan, any, any property that I think we would consider selling in the future, we probably should consider not landmarking it at this time.
I echo the Vice Mayor exactly. I'm all in favor. The park and the bridges, I think, are great. Let's, I would fully support landmarking those, but I am opposed to landmarking any of these properties that are listed. 817 and 821, if somebody would come along and alter their appearance drastically, I would be all in favor of that. I've long driven by, they are not the most attractive way to enter into Old Town. I agree with the mayor. 215 East Pima, I have concerns with the Boys and Girls Club if we put that, just make it harder for somebody to go in and develop that property and the surrounding property. And the rest of the buildings that are on this list, agree with the Vice Mayor, we're hopeful to of the buildings that are on this list, agree with the Vice Mayor, we're hopeful to sell some, or if not all of them. And also, some of the buildings, to my understanding, have had some historical challenges and concerns. So I'm concerned if we're trying to market them, but yet, we know that the buildings may have some flaws or challenges, but yet we're making it a little bit more difficult for somebody to come in and really alter or, you know, make some changes to those properties. So in short, I support landmarking the bridge, both bridges and the park, but not the buildings on this list.
I absolutely agree.
I would agree as well.
Those are my exact concerns, too.
All right. It sounds like you have pretty clear direction. I think, you know, one test for that devaluation or not would be, of course, the Finance Building, which is landmarked. So I'm curious if that's going to affect the value or not. And I think Mr. Rosenzweig is the one that's going to be working on selling that. So that'll be kind of a test for council to see, does it or does it not affect the property value? In no way does this prohibit the commission from, once we do sell those buildings, working with the new owner, encouraging them to landmark the building. It's both residential and commercial that can apply for the grant, matching grant program. So I think the new owner may decide it's a benefit to them, and they could still move forward with it. And that would be my recommendation to the commission.
The other thing with getting a landmark designation is it would be a first step, should somebody want to move to a national designation, where they may receive other tax benefits for those properties that the city wouldn't have.
Is that Boys and Girls Club a potential sale, or is that always going to be city property?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, the Boys and Girls Club needs to come down. It, our new fire chief may not be versed on that building, but I can tell you that our fire marshal is, and they would be happy to see those, that building come down. There's plans, and maybe Mr. Rodriguez or Deputy City Manager can talk more about it, but some of the plans for a new City Hall included being back there. Of course, many members of this council have talked about a town square there with a venue for entertainment, lights, and all those kinds of things. If we did anything that significant back there, that building, to the best of my knowledge, would be recommended to be brought down. I don't know that we would sell that building alone back there, because that would cut into anything we did with the park. And I will add that any building that we sell, and I know this council has expressed a desire to sell many of those buildings and get us out of Old Town for lots of reasons, that comes back to council. So that if they had an idea of what they wanted to do to the building, we would expect that in the presentation and the request of what they plan to do to the building, whether tear it down or redo it, or put a restaurant or retail in there. We're bringing back more than just the sell price to council to make decisions for our Old Town.
Do you want a motion modified to reflect that, or do you want to bring that back?
We would rather have a motion tonight, especially since what I heard tonight was the two bridges and the park. So we would be okay with that, I think. Jim?
Hey, let me give it a shot.
Do it, yeah.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a landmarking application for the list of city properties, with the exception of the addressed buildings on the list, as amended and direct staff to start the landmarking process on those properties through the city's Historic Preservation Commission.
Second?
All right, Vice Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. And if we could ask our clerk to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so let's move on then to item three, which is ordinance number 688, amending the zoning ordinance by adding a new section, 409 recreational vehicle parks and manufactured home parks, and amending sections 410, 411, 417, 418, 419, 423, and 425. This is the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm Gary Davis with Community Development. As you'll recall, when we heard this back on the 20th of October, staff is looking at solving two problems. Number one is, right now, our zoning ordinance does not have standards for development of RV parks. If somebody comes in and proposes an RV park or a major renovation to one, we don't have any physical standards that we can evaluate them based on. The second problem is that, right now, in the city of Cottonwood, we're kind of unique in the county in that we do not allow RV parks in commercial zones. They're only allowed in low-density residential areas and community facility zones, which is unusual. A lot of communities allow them on, in commercial areas where they have access to major streets and highways, as opposed to the back areas of the city. So we're looking to propose something that changes that. We took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they reviewed it three times and came with a recommendation to the council. It was discussed on the 20th of October, and the council asked us to take it back and remove a provision that the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended, which was on the length of stay. So we've removed that. But just to go through this presentation, as we had before right now, as I say, currently, RV parks are only allowed in AR 43, 70, GA, and community facility zones. We're proposing to keep it there, as well as added as commercial or conditional use permit uses in C1 and C2 throughout the city. Right now, our development standards, we do have development standards for the mobile home park in section 417, but we do not have standards, development standards for the RV park. What we're proposing is taking both of those, adding a new RV park section, as well as the mobile home, manufactured home park section, and adding a new section 409 to our zoning ordinance. Just some highlights of what would be in the development standards. And we do have representatives of, we have our building official and representatives of our fire department here, if you have any questions on how this would affect their work. But access to highway arterial or collector street would be required, and have two accesses in for safety. Interior street widths and clearances, there are requirements for that, requirements for street lighting, requirements for fire flow. That's for both manufactured home parks and RV parks. Just looking at development standards for RV parks, proposing that the minimum park size be three acres, that they're having minimum areas for the spaces and for the widths and setbacks within each space in the park. And here's the difference from last time, there is no length of stay limit. Although there's nothing that would prevent the Planning and Zoning Commission from applying a limit as a part of a conditional use stipulation, it wouldn't be stated in the code. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Do we have any questions for Mr. Davis?
I think he answered our questions from October 20. And I like the idea that we're not going to put a stay limit automatically, but the planning and zoning could if they decide it was appropriate for a particular location. So I like the idea to keep it open without making it mandatory.
Great, good. And of course, the park owner could as well put limitations on their own development. Would you have one gentleman here this evening to speak on this item, Mr. Michael Mongini?
Mike Mongini, Flagstaff, Arizona. I'm one of the owners of Happy Jack Lodge, RV Park in Sedona View, which is just south of town. In dealing with the design standards and stuff, I just want to make a comment about asphalt, because originally Happy Jack, when we opened it, we put asphalt roads in, curbs and gutters. And I'd say that probably the single complaint we received from our guest was because, why did we pave our roads? So after about 10 years, we milled them up in our expansion and turned them into gravelled roads. I think the gravelled roads gives an experience for the RV users. They seem to like that. Asphalt with those big rigs, when they start getting hot and they start turning around the asphalt, it starts tearing up the asphalt. I mean, it's nice going 75 miles down a freeway, but when you're in a small area, the one down by Camp Verdi, I'll see that in about three to five years, they'll start having major problems with their asphalt and the maintenance of it. So I appreciate that just being a standard to consider versus a requirement. I appreciate also the movement of that 180-day stay. We find that we originally were less than 180 days stay. We find that people, I don't want to say they stay there, but their units stay there. And they'll stay there for 12 months a year, but they may only be occupied less than six months. I think the Cottonwood market is specifically attractive to, I want to use the word, the snowbirds. A lot of snowbirds like to run the Phoenix, but there's a lot of them that actually enjoy the chilly weather. I knew one guy that would come from Michigan, and he would be a snowbird in Flagstaff. So it's all relative to where people want to come. But there is just the baby boomers in their RVs. There is a big demand for them in this area. I was born and raised here, and I've seen how that market has changed so dramatically in the last 10 years. I think it'd be something good for the city of Cottonwood. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Mongini?
Possibly for staff. Then regarding, I think it's in section 406, which regards the surface of these roads that would go in one of these RV parks, is that, is there any stipulation on what the surface is?
I believe so.
I'd make one of the comments on the fire suppression for these RV parks. I think it's important to have fire protection. We're in the middle of the Ponderosa Forest. We've had fires go on around us. We do have fire hydrants around Happy Jack and various fire hoses to extinguishers everywhere through the park. But the standard that you'd use for commercial development to require the fire hydrants to be 300 feet apart, or even 600 feet apart, is probably not really realistic unless we just have extra money to spend. The reason is, we got spickets everywhere. There's hoses in an RV park, they're just, every site has at least one spigot. So if a fire breaks out within the park, it is very easy to put the, any fire out, just with the, I use the word, the garden hoses, because there's so many of them.
Okay, well, that had nothing to do with my question. I agree with you that we should probably mandate an asphalt hardscape surface on the roads. Is that a requirement that's in there, or is it not?
I think, can you elaborate more on that section 406, Mr. Davis?
In the draft, in section 409 AC, we have a provision that says, "All driveways and interior streets shall be surfaced in accordance with the surfacing standards of 406 parking and loading requirements." And that section does have provision for alternative surfacing. And that's a change, as you'll see in that section, we scratched out an absolute requirement for paving with asphalt, concrete, paving, stone, masonry, permanent hard surface material, which has already, which is now required for manufactured home parks. So that does provide a little bit of flexibility for alternative types of surfacing.
And I appreciate that change, too. I know we've exercised that on some other developments, too. I think it's a good way to reduce that, the heat gain from asphalt and everything. So. All right. Any other questions, comments from council? No. This is just the first reading this evening, so we'll bring it back for a vote. I think we're on the right track. Thank you, sir. So if we could have our clerk, please read ordinance number 688 by title only.
Ordinance number 688, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of Cottonwood, Yabupai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by adding a new section 409 recreational vehicle parks and manufactured home parks, and amending sections 410, 411, 417, 418, 419, 423, and 425. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All right, item four is request to waive section 12.12.020B camping in parks and recreation facilities to allow camping at Riverfront Park for the Yabupai Hustle Mountain Bike Event scheduled for December 5th through 6th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor, council, Jack Teal, your Parks and Recreation Manager. So right before this meeting, I got a call from the applicant that he was going to be unable to make it tonight. So I will do my best to field any questions or concerns that may arise tonight during the discussion. So really, what this is, is a group had approached us asking for a facility waiver to camp in that dirt parking lot outside of the dog park and the community garden, like we've done for some of our previous events. So we told them that there's a plan, there's a blueprint to do it, but you need to get special approval. So we helped them get it on to the council meeting tonight. Their event is to be held December 5th, Saturday, and the camping to last for that Saturday night, going into Sunday afternoon, to allow for cleanup and things to get out of there. This is supposed to be an emergency backup camping only, providing that all the other options are already taken. On their website, they're already pitching Dead Horse Ranch State Park. They're pitching some of the actual campsites and some of those RV camping. This is meant to be an overflow if all those other facilities are used. And as a precautionary, where do we put them, backup plan. So that's, the intent of this is it to only be used in an emergency basis. But it is a plan that was similarly brought forward to you guys for another event back in April that we were unable to continue on with.
Are you comfortable with their, with their plan, as we've overseen other, you know, uses for that?
Yeah, I think as far as Parks and Recreation is concerned, the first thing we try to do is we tell them, before we ever take it to council, you're going to have to meet our needs first. And that means having a trash receptacle pickup. How are they going to handle that? How are they going to handle marking? How are they going to handle security, porta-pots and restrooms and things like that? So we worked through the process with them. But we are, we are okay with the terms they've put forward with their user agreement on it.
Great. Council, any questions, concerns? But I'll go ahead and move then to approve waiver of Parks and Recreation Code, section 12.12.020, use of public parks and recreation facilities, B camping in parks and recreational facilities for Riverfront Park, beginning at 12:00 PM on Saturday, December 5th, 2020, through 5:00 PM Sunday, December 6th, 2020.
Second?
Okay, Mayor, may the motion, Councilmember Henry seconded it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurot?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. All right, let's circle back then to item three. I think Mr. Whitmer must have gotten lost on his layup.
Mr. Mayor, council member, clearly, I don't have any other information to add. Feel free to table it, or deny it, or approve it. Either way, we will deny or table whichever the city attorney prefers, but we'll bring something back. My guess is, it won't be the same format. So we'll, I just don't have anything else to add, so council can feel free to act. I can tell you that we do everything we can to get things as cheap as we can, and we made those efforts. But it did require this exception, and coming to council, it was budgeted. I'm confident in the price, you know, it's a good price. But this is council's decision, and if they want to send us back to the board, I will go back to their onboard, and we'll, we'll either do a better job of defending our decision, or we'll follow the rules.
I think, I'm comfortable with approving this, because I do believe you did your homework on the backend. But the Councilmember Henry makes a good point, that the information was not in our packet, and I think that would make you more comfortable.
And I agree with you, Mayor. I don't want to hold up, obviously, and I trust staff, and again, obviously, our city manager and Mr. Whitmer feel that an exception to our procurement policy is necessary in this situation. I didn't feel as though the documentation supported that, but I do, in this situation, do trust our staff. And so I do feel comfortable moving forward with that same request, that in the future, if we just have a little bit of a clear record as to the request for the exemption, but otherwise, I'll go ahead and, if there's no other discussion.
If I might, I'll explain why. If I might, I'll explain why I was satisfied, whether I read it right or wrong, is, and I know this has happened before, staff has identified a particular unit, but then by the time they get the authority, like in this case, if they'd asked for the specific unit, they'd go out to the vendor and find out it had been sold. So I think the way this is teed up for you is in case that happened with this unit, the quote for which you see in your packet, they'd be able to not have to come back to you for a comparable unit. They have a not-to-exceed-spending authority, and they can go out and purchase it. So they have a truck in mind, and when they put this in the queue, because it takes a while between meetings, it was there, but it wasn't being held because there was no deposit on it. So they didn't want to have to come back every time a truck that they'd identified got sold.
Does that still allow for the next issue that may come up to have background documentation?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Wildin and councilmember Henry, we'll do better. We'll do better. We'll make sure that we've clearly identified the reasons for non-following policy.
Great, good.
If there's no other discussion, thank you again, staff, for that additional information. And I'll move to approve a waiver of the city's procurement policy in an amount not to exceed $56,000 to allow for the non-competitive purchase of a dump truck for the utility department.
Second.
All right. Councilmember Henry made the motion, I believe. Councilmember Narin seconded it. And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Hulse?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. I move we pay the claims.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Councilmember Hulse seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would move to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor made the motion. Give it to the vice mayor. Seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.